Where we are as a city, it's really important to be mindful of how this grows and matures over time, how we accomplish this and tackle this district to make sure that it's going to be a success. And I think the major element and the largest element in that presentation that we saw was that the timeline moves out for this project much, much farther than we're used to planning for. You know, I think I saw the date of 2075 up to. It's really important that we find a way to let this project grow organically, to attract private investment that's going to fuel that tax allocation district to ensure that this district's going to be a success so that it grows up together. Good plans take time. You know, the neighborhood that I live in took 20 or 30 years to build out. You know, and I think that's a really important part of this recipe. We can get caught up in a lot of the details of what to tackle now and today, but we've provided an enormous amount of public investment into this project to get this off the ground. And I think it's important that we find ways that this is going to be fiscally self-sustaining project well into the future. So, thank you for laying the groundwork. I think it's important to let those conditions grow organically on their own and kudos on the plan.
Thank you, sir. Aldo woman Shabazz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to tell Jeff and the team that this is a very informative presentation and documents that we did receive, very, very detailed. And I want to thank you all for your work thus far. I just want to make a statement and the area that I've been working and concentrating on a lot since I've been on City Council, and that is the inclusion of our citizens with every project that exists and will exist and that is being proposed and visioned for our city. Due to the environment that we're in now with this COVID-19, this pandemic that has hit our area and world, we have awakened to a whole new thing that none of you have had on the planning table at all. And with that being said, with our present disadvantaged business enterprise program that exists with the City of Savannah, hopefully with some edits and amendments and marriages to include our minority women business enterprise programs as we look at that in the future, that we keep our eyes on that, and I will, as long as I'm on City Council, for the total involvement of the minority women in business of our city. And moreover, to include our local vendors, and I mean everybody, I'm talking about majority contractors and minority contractors, majority primes, majority subs, minority primes, minority subs. So, I just want you all to know that, that we've got to make sure that those who have contributed into SPOSS, our city has a, the numbers, the number of the racial breakdown is what it is. Our city is majority African-American, and that is a reality. So therefore, our work, our distribution of the tax dollars need to be allocated and distributed, and our projects need to look like our city. So I speak aloud voices, and as I will continue throughout this day, because our, we as the leaders of the City of Savannah, we've got to take care of our local people. So that's what I want to put on the table right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Aldo woman Lanier, I believe you had something to add. I didn't hear any other hands from the council.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I wanted to say that you all may have heard me advocating for a community benefits strategic approach. Right now, we're into the Savannah Forward from the former city manager Hernandez instructed approach. But I'm interested in going forward with the community benefits strategic approach, because that approach allows the citizens to be the primary civic stakeholder. And in that environment, we'll be able to craft a community benefit ordinance. That ordinance will spell out how citizens go about legally engaging and partnering with developers so we can have equity and buy-in into projects. So that CBO will allow us or instruct us on how to formulate a CBA, a Community Benefits Agreement. And each project have their own community benefit agreement regardless to what area that project is in Savannah. Suppose it's on Bull Street with the project that's coming up there, the citizens there will all have an opportunity to negotiate for community benefits. And when we walk away from the table, it will be a consensus or a win-win, but they would have had an opportunity to do that. And although we have been insisting as citizens and residents in the area that we have done that, that's why I appreciate you all including referencing those things, a community benefit agreement here, when we really don't have an ordinance yet. But going forward, remember, a community benefits strategic approach allows for community benefit ordinances and community benefit agreements. Now, regarding the drainage, remember when we were in Atlanta and I asked that going forward, we have a comprehensive drainage plan, a comprehensive traffic plan, and a comprehensive parking plan, because these have been the ongoing concerns of the citizens not feeling that these areas have been solved to the extent where it would not cause a negative impact on the surrounding impacted communities. Now, on drainage, we get that plan, and we won't necessarily have already identified the funding, but that's council's job to make sure that going forward, we could identify the funding in this phased-in approach. Because the neighborhoods under the current allocations of what we are planning will still be experiencing drainage and flooding problems. So going forward, let's plan how we're going to approach it. Let's have a detailed plan, and then we have to work towards how we're going to fund it, which partners will come to the table, what federal and state initiatives and funds are available, and that will be the work of council. So, next point, I agree with Aldo woman Carter, and I have been so concerned, I've been meeting for the last several weeks with leadership in the area, talking to professionals in certain fields because of the environment and the economic landscape now as due to the impact of the COVID-19. We do not know if the new normal people will be contemplating at all. There are so many unknowns right now. No one has a magic wand or a crystal ball. And no, we with our best information that we're getting from professionals know that there are certain strategic industries that are going to struggle a little bit more trying to come back to the levels where they were. And we know what those are. But my point is this, we have contracts right now left, and they'll be coming in. And I'm concerned about that. Monies we have already spent, we have spent. And you know that I'm probably the biggest cheerleader for this project. And that money that, those contracts that are let now, that we are committing ourselves to spend, I was asking some of the leadership, so do we need a three-month, a 90-day moratorium so we could do an assessment at the end of that time to see where the economy is going to go? These are all questions I'm sure many of us have asked ourselves. But this is one thing that I would like to recommend to the city manager, that you consider and look into. Going forward with the contracts that we are letting, I think we need to insert some type of exit strategy in these contracts, because we don't know what's going to happen. To say maybe when we come back in a year or after six months after we let these contracts, let's do an assessment. And if we need to terminate these contracts at no fault, due to the new environment, the new economic environment, some policies, initiatives may need to be in place that give us a way out because of the unknown. So we don't know, I mean, we may get this vaccine or some medications, and everybody come back together, and we sing "Come by ya." We don't know. And hopefully, that would be the case so we could make this beautiful thing happen. So the original intent of building wealth in low-income communities and using this asset of the arena and the district for all of Savannah. So those are the points I wanted to make. I wanted to talk about the community benefits strategic approach. I wanted to talk about the drainage plan, traffic plan, parking plan. I want to talk about the COVID and the uncertainty, and how maybe we could formulate an exit strategy in our contracting so we could exit and terminate at no fault.
Mr. Attorney, you wanted to add to that. I believe most contracts do have opportunities to get out, but you could elaborate.
Yes, sir. And each contract will be different, obviously, and it depends on what we can negotiate into the specific contract. That's certainly something we will certainly start adding as we can negotiate it in this matter.
Thank you. Aldo woman Shabazz.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask Aldo woman Lanier in reference to, we were talking on yesterday, and you just mentioned about the ordinance. Are you stating that we need to have this community benefit ordinance as we move forward, or we should have this ordinance in place in reference to this timeline that we're looking at and what Bridgette was stating that at the end of May, first of June?
Well, let me say this, Dr. Shabazz, and thank you for asking that. So the community benefit ordinance and this strategic approach has been proposed for many, many, many years. And it does seem like it's an afterthought now, but it's been on the table. We just did not have the political will or maybe understanding, because it's not something that we created. It's a best-practice strategic approach that's implemented other places in the country and working. So that would be something crafted here with stakeholders, stockholders, who we are. If we had had that early on, then the policies would be in place to ensure that the surrounding areas are benefactors of this investment. But now, it's not impossible for us to still reach those goals, but the policies are definitely going to have to be in place. Now, when we adopt a new strategic approach for the city, that's what I'm proposing when the new city manager come in, the community benefits strategic approach. And at that point, we still could put the policies in place to say how we operate and how the partners and all of the stakeholders will come together and work in a collaborative fashion to ensure that the surrounding areas in this corridor, this low-income marginalized corridor, is brought up to maybe a equitable, a more equitable playing field. So to answer your question, in the perfect world, we would have that already in place, but we still have an opportunity to do that and put those policies in place.
All right, ladies and gentlemen.
And not before, not before, are you talking about in the next 60, 90 days, or in the next 30 days?
That's something this council, that's something this council will have to decide. We'll put it on the table, and as a council, we'll have to make that decision, but hopefully sooner than later. Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we need to start wrapping up, because we have meetings starting in a little bit. Any council member who has not said anything, have anything to say.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes, ma'am.
May I reclaim my time, please?
Hold off for reclaiming your time. Let me make sure any council members have anything else you need to say. All right. Yes, ma'am, you may reclaim your time.
Okay, so where I left off was talking about the drainage, the pre-existing vulnerabilities, not just physically, but also health-wise. And again, Bridgette, this is for the benefit of you and your team taking these pieces under consideration and possibly coming back with a plan of action, if at all possible, as we seek to approve this project. I, again, fully support the economic advantage and drivers that this project could support. Nonetheless, I would be remiss if we did not acknowledge some of the oversight and missteps that have happened in the past with regard to projects. This being the largest, the single largest project that the City of Savannah will basically produce in the coming years, takes more than just an agreement or acknowledgement that something will happen. What we want to see are policies attached to those pieces related to a health impact assessment, as well as community benefits agreement and assurance for minority contracts. Mr. City Manager, you acknowledge pieces related to the length of time this project has been planned and how long we've worked on it, and the importance of moving forward and how the existing drainage issue could take 30, in excess of 30 years to rectify in that the projected cost is $80 million. Well, one of the things I want to acknowledge again is making our actions and behaviors consistent with what our city has by way of its priorities. And if we are making this community priority, surely the Canal District would not be put before rectifying the drainage issues that currently exist with Cloverdale, Carver Village, and Brickyard, given the fact that putting the cart before the horse in this instance will essentially put these communities further at a disadvantage. So again, Bridgette, if we could essentially speak to opportunities to rectify those pieces sooner rather than later. As you stated, you inherited this as a city manager. Well, we are inheriting it as a council. And as an at-large council member, it is my intent to at least put this out there so that someone, somewhere will know that we at least acknowledged it and tried to do due diligence in getting it corrected. One other thing I had, did we discuss or address parking at all? So I'm not sure if we did, but I do know that we are in a due diligence period for parking. I don't know that that is the best course of action financially for our community. I just question the fact that we selected a site or an arena that doesn't have adequate parking. I'm not sure that was the best judgment exercise there. Nonetheless, we are here. When we talk about parking, I really want us to take into consideration the fact that our council has passed a resolution with regard to being a green community. In tandem to being a green community, we also have talked a lot about being a carless community with regard to promoting walking and ride share as well as biking. Well, I don't know that the current plan to invest the millions of dollars that we have on the table in...
She's gone. She's gone.
I think Mayor Johnson.
Yes, ma'am.
I think she is going to speak to the same considerations that Aldo woman Lanier had, along with myself, in reference to looking at alternatives for parking.
Okay. And then again, that is not a, this is, we're not at a decision point, so this is just for purposes of consideration. Let me make my comments, and then we need to adjourn to prepare for our regularly scheduled meeting that we want to start at 6:30. And a couple of things, and let's be very, very clear about this. The first of all, COVID-19 is not going to be the end of Savannah. We need to be very, very clear about that. I know it might look difficult, it might look hard, things might look really, really bad, but Savannah has survived a lot. COVID-19 is not going to end Savannah. We will get past, just like everything else has a time in the season, COVID-19 has a time in the season. We will be back in each other's presence again. We will be back living our lives again, and we have to work toward that point. The fact of the matter is this, is that the arena is a feasible project and remains a feasible project, and the arena, the arena is going to happen. It's going to happen. Be very clear about that. Aldo woman Carter's back. We are, it's going to happen. We know that the arena, and it's always been said, would not be able to survive by itself. Hence, the need for a Canal District to provide the accoutrements necessary to maintain an arena. I'm also very familiar with community benefits ordinances, and again, and support the development of that, you know, for me and for, I think for us. I just, I caution us to spend, not to spend so much time looking back that we're not looking forward. We do, we're in these chairs now. We have the opportunity to drop the narrative, and I hope we do that. This, the Canal District solves a variety of things for us, not only economically, environmentally, in terms of health, socially, and I've been at that table for the last 20 years as well, not only as a citizen, but also as an elected official. I think it's very important, because I'm the only individual who lives in that area. I live in walking distance of the arena. I live in Cloverdale, and I can tell you that we do not flood like we used to. I've been here during the hurricanes, and I will tell you, even in hurricanes, even in high, strong-force winds, even at surges, we do not flood like we used to. And there's a couple of reasons why. One is the investments the city has made regarding its pumping stations. We have pumping stations, I believe we have four, Mr. City Manager. We have four, and we're only utilizing two. Part of the reason is because we don't have the capacity in the canal to be able to move the water. Well, obviously, in expanding the canal, we now are limiting that pinch point. I remember the days when Gwinnett Street used to be a swimming pool. That does not happen anymore. And I will tell you that once we're able to lift Gwinnett Street, it won't happen again. Beloved, we have to remember that as much as we try, no matter where we try in Savannah, Savannah is a low land city. So therefore, when the right conditions are in place, we're going to experience flooding. The question becomes for us, do we stay flooded? And again, for someone who lives in that immediate area, I will tell you, that does not occur anymore. I remember times when we could not even move out of the neighborhood because it was flooding. I know, and the city manager can attest, that investment in drainage is not sexy, but it is extremely expensive and it takes time. And unless we have a way to raise it through our property taxes, then SPOSS is going to have to be the way to go. And in planning for the future, we're able to do incremental payment of those types of things. So, you know, I think that we are finally moving forward. I'm happy about that. I'm happy that we, Jeff and Bridgette and Denise and Cassie, that we have something for the public to be able to digest and discuss. And I'm glad we pushed it back to really allow the public input, to make sure people are engaged at all costs through this process. And I'm really looking forward to it. The only thing I do have some issue with, because I remember at the very initial points of this, and particularly talking with the neighborhoods, we, part of the community benefits was for Canal District to have extensive park, leisure, recreation. That was going to rival Daphen Park and Forsite Park, in which we could do a variety of things, not only for communities, but the fields and types of activities that young people would have, places to call home on the West Side, to hold tournaments on the West Side. And that would also be another local economic driver for tournaments and those types of things. I did not see that in the Canal District, and I have those renderings from when we first started. So, I mean, this is not the time to address it, but I just wanted to throw that out there. So, thank you for what you have done. I think that the timeline seems appropriate for what is being proposed. I did not want us to rush into this. And again, it does go before MPC. It might have helped if we had MPC involved in this process. It might have been a little bit easier to get through their infrastructure. But I think that, you know, this is enough time to make sure. And I know from all of us, we'll make sure that residents have the opportunity to evaluate, to weigh in, and, you know, and then get it back to our team. So, any adjustments can occur.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one quick question to Bridgette Lydie. I didn't ask you this on yesterday. Is Bowsey Ford Park in the development of the Canal District? Will the Canal District have anything to do with the development of Bowsey Ford?
So when we were going through this process, the residents of Cloverdale were very passionate about Bowsey Ford Park. As a part of our effort, what we've done is we've made sure on the trail connections, to make sure that we have Bowsey Ford Park and the Arena District connected. So there will be a way to get from point A to point B. And that was something that we heard loud and clear in reference to Bowsey Ford, Bowsey Ford Park. And that has been taken into account.
No, it wasn't about the connectivity. Let me, it wasn't about the connectivity. Bowsey Ford, original plan was supposed to build out in phases, and I think out of the six or seven phases, only two were built out from the 1989 promise from the city. So this ties the town connection. That's not a West Side or Cloverdale or anyone's initiative that was thrust upon us. So it is a connection there, and that's not what Aldo woman Blakely was asking. So thank you, Bridgette. Bridgette, it will be connected, but the building out of the Bowsey Ford, that's another project, Aldo woman Blakely, and that's something we discussed.
But let me be, let me be more specific, since I'm intimately familiar with the project. The reason why Bowsey Ford Park was never fully built out is because Bowsey Ford Park is on a landfill. It is a landfill that has been covered for years. And when we investigated the opportunities of developing it, the reality is, because it's not a lined landfill, you would have to be able to uncover it, take out all the trash and everything that's underneath it, line it, then put the stuff back and cap it again, which the estimates are beyond millions of dollars to be able to do. It is safer from a health standpoint, because there is methane gas and those types of things, not to disturb a covered landfill. And I'm sure all of you that are interested in environmental aspects of that know, not only the cost, but the dangers associated with it, which is why, and there's documentation from the city over the years, that it was not wise nor prudent to be able to open that landfill. And likewise, that's why it had not been developed.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
In reference to that statement, in our conversation yesterday, we were talking about the toxics and the environmental aspects of the Tannenbaum property, in reference to where our site for the parking garage is supposed to be. So that's a sort of a triggered thought when you mentioned about the landfill.
It's not for a parking garage to go on Tannenbaum Park. The plan is not for a garage to go on Tannenbaum Park.
Well, the site that we saw yesterday, in which if it's not the Tannenbaum property, it's right across, it's right across the canal, which is across from the arena. So I may be stating.
No, it's surface parking, surface parking into Tannenbaum site.
Okay, but there was a...
Which is allowable.
If I'm saying this incorrectly, Aldo woman Lanier, in reference to that parking garage...
You're not saying it incorrectly. It's not a parking lot. It's just a parking lot. You're correct.
Parking lot.
It's right. Surface parking, correct.
Okay, so that was not the point that I was making. The point that I was making is about the toxics on that property, and even having surface parking on there, which would brought to really deep thought for me, that we should not even be considering having parking over in that area due to the fact of the health and the environment of our citizens and our visitors also. So I just wanted to make that point, sort of trigger it, when you was talking about Bowsey Ford Park.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor Johnson, to that point, to that point, the same...
Aldo woman Palumbo, and then Aldo woman Bryan, and then Aldo woman Carter.
Yes, just to give us enough time to get ready for our next meeting.
I know. I'm trying to wrap it up. I'm trying to wrap it up.
I just wanted to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
If we need one.
That, well, let me go, let me go into... That, well, let me go, let me go into Alderwoman Bryan, Alderwoman Carter, and then we will adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Palumbo, Alderwoman um Martha Bryan.
Mayor Johnson and City Manager, I have fifteen years of environmental health and safety. Um the surface parking lot that we speak of, it's, we've already did our due diligence for that, it's going to be capped off, and it's not going to create any hazards for anybody living in that area or visiting in that area. The EPA has very stringent policies and practices, and they would not allow us to move forward if they thought it was going to create a health hazard. And I say that as a environment, health, and safety manager. Thank you.
All right, Alderwoman Carter.
Uh Mayor Johnson, for the same reasons you gave, in terms of the Bowls Park not being complete, or reasoning why we can't develop that area, is essentially the same reasons that should apply to this intended parking lot. Nonetheless, notwithstanding the fact that it's just not fiscally prudent, in addition, it does not align itself with our twenty thirty-five goal with regard to being a green community. Um why we in Savannah as a council would elect to invest millions of dollars in grass and brick and and grass, gravel, and dirt, uh more than we would invest in our people is beyond me, and I would not want to be a part of any of those decisions. Um nonetheless, we are here, and again, Bridget, uh these are pieces I would like for you all to give consideration to. Um Mayor Johnson, you acknowledge that you live in that neighborhood. Well, you live in that neighborhood, and so you can see that it is continuously and for several decades, it has been one of the most impoverished communities in our city. Uh that being, that that being said, that community is filled with individuals who have contributed to the fabric of our city. Um these are some of the finest citizens in our community. Um they have invested their time and tenure in our workplaces, in our educational systems, in our law and medical fields, and so that community is far more deserving of policies and not promises when it comes to assuring those economic advantages and those pieces related to our minority contractors, in addition to community benefits and drivers. Um again, I submit to you that our community, our previous governments, do not have a good track record in marrying communities together, particularly when it comes to a large project like this, and I just don't want us to get lost. I don't want this community to get lost in other people's opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we are finished. We will see you at six thirty. Again, thank you, uh Jeffrey, thank you, Bridget, thank you, Denise, uh and thank you, Cassie, for your time and work again. Um more to come on this. We'll see you at six thirty. Thank you. And the time is approximately six thirty-one P M. Um we will now have Alderwoman Stella Shabazz, who will introduce our uh Minister of the Day, Alderwoman Shabazz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a pleasure and an honor on today uh to have with us uh a young woman uh who is uh not young to the work of the ministry, but uh young in uh taking over uh the church as the pastor. She is uh Pastor Kendra Crawford, and she is the pastor of Morning Glory Temple of Deliverance uh Church, which is located right behind the Wendy's and Burger King or Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard here in Savannah. And uh she is directly, her church is directly connected to the Herbert Hatton Homes apartment complex. Pastor Crawford is a humbled, dynamic, spiritual powerhouse, yes she is, whose steps are absolutely ordered by the Lord as she pursues her destiny. Under uh Pastor Crawford's leadership, Morning Glory has been posturing itself uh as an aid to the community. Before this time of the pandemic, and even more now, she has taken on the mantle and has led her community outside of the walls of the church. She has been uh sponsoring, and the church has been offering their service and ministry in their mission work. Uh they have been doing uh giveaways of food uh to help that community and other communities uh next to the church. This church has been supplying school supplies, uniforms, and other necessities. The church also, in its ministry, they hold educational workshops and seminars, and they also when the when at the time uh when the church is able to uh give out benevolent uh assistance to meet the needs of others. Uh Pastor Kendra is also a public servant. She is currently working uh at the Chatham County Sheriff's Office, and she's been there for over eighteen years, and is currently serving as the Corrections Compliance Manager. Pastor Kendra Crawford, I welcome you to our City Council, to the city of Savannah, and for all of those who are listening at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp, for giving me this opportunity to provide the invocation on today. Thank you, Mayor Johnson, and the rest of the City Council, for receiving me to pray for you guys in the city of Savannah as a whole. Let us bow our heads and go before the throne of grace at this time. Eternal God, our Father and King, Lord, I give you praise and honor for this day, for this very moment. God, I thank you for your protection and provision for the city of Savannah. I thank you for each member of our City Council, and ask that you endow them with your wisdom, boldness, strength, and peace. Lord, I thank you for bringing them into these positions of leadership for such a time as this, for you already knew what was being released into the earth, oh God. May your Holy Spirit lead and guide them into all truth, as they make decisions to keep the citizens of Savannah safe and viable. I pray blessings upon them and their families as they endure through these times of uncertainty. Lord, I pray for the citizens of Savannah and surrounding communities, that we will unite in obedience and follow the instructions of our local government, as they lead, as they are led by you, oh God. God, I pray for an abundance of resources to be every physical, every financial, every mental, every spiritual need of these citizens, out of a point to your rich and glory in Christ Jesus. I pray for those families, Lord, that have lost loved ones, don't understand you, oh God. Lord, I pray that you will comfort them and allow an overflow of grace and peace to rest upon their heart. I pray that your peace will be our portion, as we continue to trust in you, our sovereign God. So now, God, unto you, oh God, we all glory in that, just in dominion and power both now and forevermore. It is in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen. Hallelujah.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Pastor. Thank you, Pastor Crawford, thank you. I've had the opportunity of of knowing Pastor Crawford almost all her life. Um and um beyond being a a former coworker of Pastor Crawford's, um I salute the spirit of her father, Pastor Kenneth Crawford, uh and and her her beloved mother, who is still with us, Pastor Carolyn Crawford.
That's right.
And so she comes from good stuff.
Praise God.
But we thank you so much for being with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag
Of the United.
Of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you very much. And we thank our um our Public Information Office for for helping us through that minute. Um and you'll see why we see it on 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 our TV. Uh we will now uh move to our agenda. There is looking for a motion to approve the agenda for uh April the twenty-third.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderwoman Shabazz.
Uh I'd like to uh make a motion for the approval of the minutes for the special called meeting.
Ma'am, ma'am, they didn't approve the agenda for the meeting.
To approve the agenda?
Yes.
To approve the agenda, as it is written.
There a second?
Second.
And probably move a second that we approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, indicate by showing your hand. Opposed? Motion passes. Go ahead with the approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the special called meeting for COVID- nineteen and city operations of April the second, two thousand and twenty. Also, to add to that motion, the approval of the minutes for the special called meeting for the COVID- nineteen and city operations of April the sixth, two thousand and twenty.
And secondly, about Aldo Woman Lanier, you've heard the motion. All in favor, indicate by showing your hands. Motion passes. No organizational items, no presentations on the consent agenda. That is counted as item number four. Four through six. If anybody wants to pull anything off of the agenda. One, number four is authorize city manager to execute a contract amendment, number two, for design services, contract for city facilities, and interchange court to Hussey, Gaye, Bell, and DeYoung in the amount of nine thousand one hundred seventy dollars. Number five is authorize city manager to approve contract modification, number two, for Summerside Park with Jackson Locks in the amount of five thousand four hundred five dollars and twenty-five cents. And number six is authorize city manager to procure repair services from coming sales and services in the amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Does any councilman want to pull any of these off?
Mr. Mayor, yes, item number.
Aldwin Per T.
Number five.
Aldwin Per T. Go ahead, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Aldo Woman Shabazz.
Item number five.
Okay, we're pulling item number five. Anybody want to pull anything else off? Okay, can I have a motion for items four and six?
Mr. Mayor?
Aldwin Per T.
I move to approve items number four and number six as read on the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
And probably move a second that we approve item number four and six, per city manager's recommendation. All in favor, indicate by showing your hands. Motion passes. Item number five, Aldo Woman Shabazz.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, I just wanted to make note of it and amplify it a little bit more to let the citizens and the constituency of Summerside to know that we are getting ready to bring more improvements back on the Summerside Park. So this item is to authorize the city manager to approve the contract modification, number two, for the Summerside Park in the amount of five thousand four hundred and five dollars and twenty-five cents. Want to make that motion, Mr. Mayor?
There a second?
Second motion.
And probably move a second that we approve a contract modification, number two, for Summerside Park in the amount of five thousand four hundred five dollars and twenty-five cents. You heard the motion. All in favor, indicate by showing your hands. Opposed? Motion passes. On the purchasing.
Mayor Johnson, I have a question.
Regarding the purchasing agenda?
Yes, regarding item.
Regarding which item?
Five. My question is directed to Dr. Shabazz.
Go ahead.
Dr. Shabazz, I recall being at the meeting when this particular item was of issue. Does this satisfy that which the residents were concerned?
We are, we are about, I would say about eighty-seven percent of satisfaction. We are, we are moving towards one hundred percent. We're not all the way there. So I would say right now between eighty-seven and ninety percent there.
Okay, what would it take for us to get them to one hundred percent?
We've got to go back and, because when we left the meeting, we were supposed to meet out there as the community and ourselves. But that's when COVID- nineteen hit us, and we got the emergency shelter in place, and everything has stopped. So we've got to go back along with Aldo Woman Blakely, who was with us, and we'll go back and revisit to make sure we make them whole.
Okay, I just want to make sure, not certain how all of this work. But Mayor Johnson, if you can tell me if there is a opening or a window whereby we could entertain whatever additions this community wanted for Summerside.
I think, well, obviously, it's a budget issue, but for purposes of the rest of the council, this is a contract amendment, if the city manager, if I'm correct, that funds the two additional benches on concrete pads at the park, and it relocates the existing sign, correct?
That's correct.
Parallel to Clin Street?
On Clin Street, yes.
Right. So I'm not sure exactly what's the difference between eighty-seven and a hundred percent. But, you know, I guess at the point at which you all work with city manager, and the funds are there, we most certainly entertain it.
What I would do, Aldo Woman Gibson-Carter, is that we will talk more off of the City Council time right now. But if we need to bring it back to City Council and talk with the mayor even more with this and the city manager, we can. But thank you so much for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to purchasing items, there are four items there, purchasing agenda. Seven is authorize city manager to execute amendment number three to the contract of Perkins and Will to the amount of four hundred ten thousand six hundred thirty dollars to extend the design and styles avenue improvements. Number eight is authorize city manager to execute contract amendment, number one, for the Savannah River Landing Eastern Wharf Parking Garage Project with Raymond Engineering up to one hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. Number nine is authorize city manager to procure meals for the summer lunch program from the Savannah Chatham Board of Education for up to three hundred thousand dollars. Number ten is authorize city manager to procure builders' risk insurance for the Savannah Arena from U S I Insurance Services LLC in an amount not to exceed six hundred fifty thousand dollars. And eleven is authorize city manager to execute a contract for directional boring with D and C Directional Boring LLC up to one hundred thousand dollars. Would any member of council like to pull anything off the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Please pull items number seven, number eight, and number ten.
Seven, eight, and ten. Aldwin Palumbo.
Yes.
That's just an information request for number eight.
Okay, anybody, anything else? Okay, members of council, please take a motion for items number nine and eleven.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Aldo Woman Shabazz.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve items number nine and item number eleven, as read by our city, as our mayor. Our second.
Then probably move a second that we approve items number nine and number eleven. You've heard the motion. All in favor, indicate by raising your hands. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven. Aldo Woman Carter.
Who is Marcus Lottson?
He's with the NPC.
Oh, okay.
Aldo Woman Blakely, you had item number seven.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor. I am just curious as to why we are giving Perkins and Will four hundred ten thousand dollars, four hundred and ten, four ten thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. What is this for? Is that an additional amount that we're giving them to design the arena? I thought all of that stuff was already done.
Styles Avenue.
Styles Avenue on the railroad tracks.
It says, wait a minute. It says, arena design services, purchasing summary, arena design.
Oh, the city manager?
I'm trying.
Go ahead.
Yes.
You went after it, I'm Blakely.
So council recalls that at the April ninth meeting, council transferred the funding to set up this project. This is the northern portion, northern portion of Styles Avenue from the railroad tracks to Lewisville Road. The only part that's currently in the arena design contract is that portion from Gwinnett to the railroad tracks. So this will just continue that work. The Perkins and Will is using a local consultant, Hussey, Gaye, Bell, to do the design. Hussey, Gaye, Bell and DeYoung did the design already from Gwinnett to the railroad tracks. It's just more so for expediency than anything else. As you know, we're under a tight timeframe with this project. This will allow, this will probably save us a hundred and twenty days. Otherwise, the city would have to issue an R F P, do the advertising, do the evaluation, schedule it with council, get council approval. That process will probably take about a hundred and twenty days. Since Hussey, Gaye, Bell, and DeYoung is already under contract to Perkins and Will, it just makes more efficiency for the process, for the project to continue along that path.
Mr. Mayor?
And by the way, Aldo Woman Blakely, the Perkins and Will will maintain its twenty-two percent D B E participation in this project, just as it is on the arena.
Thank you.
Aldo Woman Lanier and Aldo Woman Carter.
Yes, regarding this, I was also wanted just to make comments about it. Of course, this was not a part of the original plan. The part of Styles Avenue between Gwinnett and the railroad track going north was. However, I read, in doing the due diligence, I did read that because from the traffic analysis that was done in the traffic survey, it was determined that Styles Avenue north of the railroad track to Lewisville Road be added and widened. Now, of course, we have been advocating for years to address Styles Avenue south of Gwinnett to O'Geechy Road because of the negative impact it's probably going to have on the neighborhood there. However, I think we've settled on phasing that in at a later time. Now, going north of the railroad track to Lewisville Road, I want everyone to understand that the port plans to have an intersection there. Right now, it's a T, a capital T, because you could either make a left or a right going north on Lewisville Road, on Styles Avenue at Lewisville Road. But the port is going to be extending Styles Avenue over into their new carport through that berm. The berm will be removed. So that, the new road that we're talking about now will probably be more aligned with the intersection that the port is proposing. So we're spending that money now because we will and can anticipate an increase in traffic to that area. Now, the other concern I had was that we did not go back out to bid with this contract. And it was explained to me about the efficiency, and I can accept that. However, I was concerned about the scorecard. I did not have the information on the participation and the goals at this point. But I'm being assured now that a local company is receiving these design services, and I can accept that better because my concern is that we do meet our goals and exceed our goals on D B E and that we not only utilize D B Es, but local D B Es. So in this case, I was satisfied with what I found out in doing the due diligence on this project.
Aldo Woman Carter. You're muted.
With regard to the firm we are using for this particular item, just as it's more efficient to move forward with them, I think it's also more efficient for us to diversify who we have as our contractors when it comes to our engineering and architectural projects, because we are recycling. I've noted since I've been on council and previous to coming to council, it's the same companies, it's the same things that continue to be recycled. So in as much as we want to diversify when it comes to minorities, we also want to diversify in terms of who we use locally on these projects. There are more than one engineering firm and contractors and architects in the city.
Aldo Woman Carter and I agree with you, and it's definitely noted as well. There are some benefits in this case in terms of the efficiencies that are gathered. Not only the timeframe, also the possibility of paying more money, and obviously, they would have to probably do site planning as well, as I don't believe that the current firm will be obligated to give over their own, or depend on another firm's engineering studies. So, but I do agree with you, there are definitely opportunities out there. And to Aldo Woman Lanier's point, this was part of our discussions with the community to make sure that traffic did not impact the community, did not come into the community, as you are aware, and everyone is aware, it's been in that corridor. There are definitely huge issues of going west on Styles Avenue from Gwinnett Street to the O'Geechy Road overpass. Most of it involves, would involve, or have to involve the taking of private property just because their homes are so close to that area. But going north on there is much less intrusive, and it also provides a way for people to exit the arena and leave without intruding into the neighborhood communities. But I saw Aldo Woman Shabazz and Aldo Woman Blakely. I'll mute yourself, ma'am. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. In reference to this amendment, number three, for this contract, I would need, city manager, would you please get me a breakdown of how the D B Es will get this one hundred and, this four hundred and ten thousand dollars? Can you please get that breakdown to me in reference to our D B Es? Also, knowing that from the history and herstory of this project, there is only one local D B E firm on this project. So the truth of the matter is that, and with, and with that one firm being a part of the D B Es, there is only a zero point two percent participation of local contract, of local participation from D B Es on this contract, which is the truth of the matter. And it's already done, the whole thing of the previous numbers, and now we're talking about an amendment to this contract of four hundred and ten thousand dollars, and I would like to give a breakdown of how the D B Es, how this money is going to be distributed to our D B Es and local contractors, but more specifically, the D B Es.
Mr. City Manager, please make that available to all council members. Thank you. Aldo Woman Blakely.
Yes, I heard Aldo Woman Lanier say that Georgia Ports Authority is going to be project over near the area where this design is going to take place. Is there any, are they going to be putting any funds in this? Do we have to pay this full amount, or what's going on? How does that work?
So Georgia Ports Authority plans to expand its row row, its roll-on, roll-off, which is over by the Talmadge Bridge. So the trucks that are leaving the row row will be just turning left on Lewisville. They won't be going to Styles because their most expedient route would be to get to I sixteen by that interchange. So they will not be going down Styles Avenue. It's just that DOT will pay for its share of the intersection, but not that portion going from the railroad track nor to Lewisville Road.
So is there any design that they, is it, do we have to pay this full amount, or?
Yes, ma'am. This is, this is the city's portion just to go from the railroad track all the way to Gwinnett Street, excuse me, to Lewisville Road. Because it's, it's also, it's widening, the design includes widening Styles Avenue as well as putting in bike path and a sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Aldo Woman Shabazz, again, remind council of the rules. So go ahead, Aldo Woman Shabazz.
Yes, city manager, I needed to add the word local into my request, local D B Es. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion regarding this item? Aldo Woman Bryan.
I make a motion that we call for the vote and approve number seven with the necessary information that they've all requested. It's going to enhance Styles Avenue. The Georgia Ports will not be adding the bicycle lanes, and it's just an extension. It stopped at the railroad. It's supposed to go from the railroad now to Lewisville Road so that it won't bottleneck. There are going to be four lanes, and it makes no sense to have the four lanes. There are going to be four lanes, and it makes no sense to have the four lanes at the railroad track and then just have two. So my motion is to approve number seven.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Aldo Man Palumbo has seconded, um, it's been, um, you've heard the motion, all of favor indicate by showing your hands. Motion passes. Item number eight, uh, Aldo Woman Blakely. That'd be Aldo Woman Blakely, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I am concerned that, um, we will be giving Savannah River Landing, Eastern Wharf, the parking garage project, Raymond Engineering, and a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, that particular project had a serious fire, and I am sure, I'm, I'm more than sure that insurance covered some of that. Why are we paying them a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars?
I believe that's for, um, um, representing the city through final design. Miss City Manager, you might have some more to? Yes, ma'am, and you're, you're exactly right. So because of the fire, the city will need to extend the service contract with Raymond Engineering for another six months and have Raymond Engineering continue to do the, the due diligence and the, uh, and the construction quality assurance to make sure that there are no structural issues because of the fire. Uh, but the city's intent is that this money will be, will be, uh, up fronted from the bond proceeds from when the city issued the bond on the parking garage. But it is the city's intent to seek reimbursement from Eastern Wharf Insurance Company.
Okay.
So you are right. And I do want to point out that, uh, that this engineering company is a hundred percent DBE and a hundred percent local.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Aldo Woman.
Okay.
I authorize the city managers to execute contract amendment number one for the Savannah River Landing Eastern Wharf Parking Garage Project with Raymond Engineering up to a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
I second.
And probably move to second that we authorize City Manager to execute said contract. You've heard the motion, all of favor indicate by showing your hands. Oppose? Motion passes. On item number ten, ten.
I oppose, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Call me, say it again. Okay, all, all the woman, um, Mr. Clerk, um, note that Aldo Woman Shabazz, um, um, item that's eight to one.
Uh, it's actually seven to two, I also Gibson-Carter.
Okay, thank you. Let the record show state. Item number ten, authorize City Manager to procure builder's risk insurance for the Savannah Arena from USI Insurance Services, and in an amount not to exceed six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Aldo Woman Blakely.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I am very concerned that we are going to be paying up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for insurance when I was told that, uh, we had like, uh, turnkey once the, the arena project was completed, the, uh, contractor would hand us the keys, and they should be responsible for everything until we signed off on, until we, uh, got the keys from them. So why are we paying up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for builder's risk insurance? They should automatically have insurance, I would think.
Uh, Miss City Manager? Well, well, no, ma'am, the, uh, the budget, the hundred sixty-five million dollar budget includes this, the six hundred fifty thousand dollars for the builder's risk. It's just that till construction begins, right now, so far, all the work has been, uh, site work, but there's been no need to call upon the builder's risk. But once construction begins, I mean, we just witnessed what happened at Eastern Wharf. Without builder's risk, uh, there, there is no insurance, and the city must by law maintain insurance on a construction project.
That's interesting, because I was told something totally different. Um, so they don't have insurance, they're not responsible for having insurance on this project. Uh, from the understanding that I got, once they completed the part, we put everything in their hands. Once we put everything in their hands, they do whatever they need to do. That's why there was not a, uh, local DBE participation included in the contract and what have you. So now you're telling me and our citizens that we are going to be responsible for six hundred, up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, uh, builder's risk insurance?
To, for, for insurance, just in case something happens to the facility, the city is still responsible. Um, Mr. Monahan?
Hmm.
Uh, Mr. Lovey, oh wait, here's Mr. Bell.
Hey, can I just jump on really quick?
Mm-hmm.
Just to clarify, so when City Council awarded the contract to AECOM, um, the builder's risk insurance was one of those discussion items at that time. Um, AECOM's, uh, their price included that builder's risk insurance. The city believes that we could get insurance at a cheaper rate, and it looks like that will be true. Um, so, so, so the City Council agreed for us to pull the builder's risk out and that we would be responsible instead of the contractor.
Because we will be billed that, correct? Otherwise, right?
That's right, they were just passing that on to the budget cost. Either way, whether AECOM, um, buys it themselves or whether we buy it, it's still part of that one hundred sixty-five million dollar, um.
Aldo Man Palumbo and then Aldo Woman Shabazz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I was just wondering if staff could clarify the funding source for this agenda item.
So the funding, the funding, the funding source is Squad Six.
Okay.
Aldo Woman Shabazz.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm just concerned, due to the fact that, uh, we are, uh, experiencing, uh, this COVID nineteen and that, uh, in our local, uh, without, we're talking, been talking for the last few weeks about we've got to revisit our budget and to find out, uh, how we are going to recoup, uh, some of this money. My concern with this is that AECOM, AECOM Hunt, uh, is, uh, the construction manager at risk. AECOM is also, uh, AECOM from Florida, from the state of Florida. And what I am, uh, stating is that we need to, uh, if we're going to do this, we have local, local businesses, uh, even, uh, local, uh, businesses who could, uh, have another opportunity, uh, in our city to, uh, to receive some of these dollars. We're talking about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, with this contract. So we, we need to, uh, you know, take another look at this because I'm very, very disturbed that almost a million dollars is going to be going out of our community and not giving, uh, our local business persons the opportunity to, uh, to submit, uh, bids to us for this insurance. We have several, several businesses who are in the, the business of insurance and even insuring these types of projects. So again, I speak and scream that we need to, uh, concentrate on our local businesses here in Savannah as we move around our local dollars. So I'm really opposed of, of, of this, um.
Aldo Woman Shabazz, um, I think it needs to be noted that first of all, this is insurance. Um, secondly, USI.
That's what I know, Mr. Mayor.
USI is already under contract with the City of Savannah. They already provide us service.
But I am talking.
We're, we're, we're actually provide, we're actually, um, using in this, uh, our existing contract to be able to get insurance at a cheaper rate than if we did it outside, if we ran it out to bid, for example, because we already have that relationship.
If I can just, uh, add too, USI i- is a local firm, so it's a local brokerage that we use.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, Aldo Woman Shabazz? Aldo Woman Lanier?
Yes, um, after hearing all of that that I do take in, I would like to authorize the City Manager to procure the builder's risk insurance for the Savannah Arena from USI Insurance Services LLC in an amount not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Second.
And probably the second that we, um, approve, uh, item number ten. Uh, you've heard the motion, all of favor indicate by saying aye, or raising your hand, all opposed? Okay, let the records show, seven to, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. Um, number twelve is approval of their, uh, alcohol license hearings. Um, item number twelve is approval of a Class B beer brew alcohol license to Pret E Matthews of Hop and Tomica at five thirty-five East Thirty-Ninth Street in Alderman District Two. Uh, number fifteen, thirteen is a approval of a Class C beer and wine by the drink and Class D beer and wine by the package alcohol license to Jeff and Atreka of River Street Beer and Wine at five oh three East River Street, also in District Two. Um, then, uh, item number fourteen, uh, is a motion, uh, well, recommended to be continued, so we'll move on to, uh, fifteen, approval of a Class C liquor by the drink alcohol license at Theodore R. Mosley of State Bridge Sweets at three oh one East Bay Street, Alderman District Two. Um, item number sixteen, I, approval of a Class C liquor, beer and wine by the drink alcohol license to Jamesetta Whipple Duncan, Etters, Southern Caplet and Wondery Restaurant at thirteen oh eight Montgomery Street, Alderman District Two. Mr. Clerk, have you received any, um, public comment regarding any of those hearings?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay, is there a motion to close the hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Then probably move to second that we close the hearings for items number twelve, thirteen, fifteen and sixteen. You've heard the motion, all of favor indicate by raising your hands. Opposed? Motion passes. On item number, um, uh, item number fourteen is an approval of a Class E wine by the package alcohol license to Deka Patel of J and J Food Market, eight forty-eight Staley Avenue in Alderman District Five. It's been recommended this is continued to May fourteenth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion to continue?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion to continue this item in District Five until, uh, May the twenty, what's the, what's the date?
Fourteenth.
May fourteenth.
I second.
Then probably move to second that we continue the approval of the Class E wine by the package license to alcohol to Deka Patel of J and J Food Market, eight forty-eight Staley Avenue, District Five. You heard the motion, all of favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Clerk, um, did I, did I carry twelve, thirteen?
No, sir, not yet. All we did was close the hearing.
All right, thank you. So can I entertain a motion regarding item number twelve, thirteen, fifteen and sixteen?
District Two.
You muted?
We got, there you go.
I'm, I'm, I'm still muted?
No, we got you.
Okay.
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, we don't have a, a problem at all with those, but I, I stand a motion to approve, uh, everything in District Two. That's, uh, twelve, thirteen, fifteen?
Second, sir.
And sixteen.
And sixteen, please.
All right, the second?
Yeah, second.
Probably move to second that we approve item number twelve, thirteen, fifteen and sixteen per the City Manager's condition. You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye? Showing your hands. Opposed? Motion passes. I noticed that we have, um, an Atlanta Falcons, um, um, fan in the room, and I'm going to eject him right now per my prerogative, but, um, we have an approval on the zoning hearings, um, for sixty-five, twenty-eight acres of property on Stillwood Drive and Cedar Grove Avenue, Savannah Country Day. It's been recommended, Mr. Lotson, this is continued to May the twenty eighth, twenty twenty, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. The petition was requested it be continued.
Okay, uh, is there a motion regarding this?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I move.
Go ahead, Aldo, Aldo Man Perti.
I move to, uh, continue item number seventeen to rezone sixty-five point twenty acres of property on Stillwood and Cedar Grove to May twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Probably move to second that we approve, um, the approval, well, we continue to May twenty eighth, twenty twenty, the, uh, approval of the hearing to rezone sixty-five, twenty-eight, point twenty-eight acres of property on Stillwood Drive and Cedar Grove Avenue. You've heard the motion, all of favor indicate by showing your hands. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Lotson, hope you're well, good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, under item number eighteen, um, it is a second reading to amend the Eastern Wharf Plan Development to include assigned ordinance. Uh, Miss City Manager, I understand it was, um, there was some discussion that occurred between, uh, Mr. Yellen and Ms. Wood? Uh, you, you're, you're muted, let me.
You're muted.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir. There you go.
I, I think Mr. Lotson can address this, but, uh, in follow-up to the last meeting, council directed a meeting to take place. We, the petitioner and some, uh, other interested parties, the memo went out yesterday to council saying that was a successful meeting, there were three points that were agreed upon, and as far as I know, it is ready for a vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Aldo Woman Lanier.
Yes, I wanted to add that in the last meeting, this was an item that I pulled and requested that the petitioner meet with the residents of, of, of the citizens, and that did happen, I do believe Aldo Man Palumbo attended that, and I thank you for that. And I just want to say that the process worked. This, this way of doing business where you would have the citizens sit down and negotiate with the petitioners or with developers, it worked. And they were able to, uh, meet, have a meeting of the minds and, and walk away from the table, um, to be able to live with this ordinance. So at this time, if there's nothing else, I would like to, I move to have uh, amend the Eastern Wharf Plan Development to include assigned ordinance by petitioner Harold Yelling on behalf of the SRL Land Ventures LLC. Second.
The second, probably move to second that we amend the Eastern Wharf Plan Development to include the signed ordinance. You've heard the motion, all of favors indicate by showing your hands. Motion passes. Um, thank you, Mr. Lotson.
I oppose.
Oh, who? Who opposed? Aldo Woman Shabazz, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, indicate that's an eight to one vote. Thank you, yeah. Um, item number nineteen, um, it's a resolution authorizing third modification of a promissory note and loan agreement between City of Savannah and the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Ladies and gentlemen, council, can somebody make a motion that we appropriate for the City Manager a new battery for his computer? Because this is the second time, this is happened, so.
Oh, he has used cans.
I wanted it stitched cord and I plugged it into your outlet in your conference room, and apparently the outlet doesn't work. So I will have to work on it tomorrow for building.
We'll take care of that, Marty.
So, uh, so the, the item before council will be the continuation of an existing loan agreement with the Georgia Environmental Facilities Authority for the bio solids improvements at the wastewater treatment plant on President Street. All this does is extend the term, that loan was going to expire April the thirtieth, but because the project's not done, construction is still ongoing, Jifa has agreed to allow the city to extend it until December thirty-first of this year. It's a, just an extension of the term, no other, uh, impact whatsoever.
Mr. Mayor.
Aldo Woman Bryan.
Mr. Mayor, that's in the third district, uh, I make a motion that we approve number nineteen, please and thank you.
Second. And probably move to second that we approve the resolution authorizing third modification of a promissory known loan agreement between the City of Savannah and the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority. You've heard the motion, all of favor indicate by raising your hands. Motion passes, okay, passes. Um, item number twenty, twenty-one are related, um, is, is, um, we have mutual aid agreements between the Savannah Police Department, Aldo Woman Bryan?
Mr. Mayor, um, I make a motion that we approve number twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. It's a mutual agreement, should any emergency type, uh, things happen, that we will work with each other and use each other's expertise. It's also noted that we already have that agreement with Savannah State.
Okay, and Georgia Southern.
And Georgia Southern.
Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Yes, Aldo Man, Aldo Man Perti.
Uh, now, item number twenty-one, that's my employer, so I'm going to abstain from that vote.
Okay, thank you. What we'll do is we'll move back to item number twenty, um, and I'll take the motion for all the women. Um, Bryan, is there a second?
I seconded.
Then probably move to second that we approve item number twenty, a mutual aid agreement, man and technical college. You've heard the motion, all of favor indicate by showing your hands. Motion passes. Item number twenty-one, recognize, um, the recusal of Aldo Man Perti adoption, approval of a mutual aid agreement with Georgia Southern University. Uh, Aldo Woman Brian, um, has made the motion, is there a second?
I second it.
And probably move to second that we approve the mutual aid agreement with Georgia Southern University. Um, you've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by showing your hands. Motion passes, Mr. Clerk, recognize, uh, it passed eight to zero. Aldo wom- Aldo Man Perti, um, recusing himself. Um, number twenty-two is approval to amend the City Manager's. Um, number twenty-two is approval to amend the city manager's employment agreement month to month until appointment of the new city manager. As you all are well aware, um, Mister Monahan has been gracious to, uh, give us up to May, um, and we're at that point where we need to, um, make sure we maintain, uh, our city manager, um, and he's graciously to agree to stay till we have a new one. Mister Per T.
Uh, Mister Mayor, I, uh, move to approve to amend the city manager's employment agreement. It's month by month until appointment of new city manager.
Second.
Then probably move to second.
Excution.
All the women, Shabazz.
Uh, this item, uh, I have some quest- I have some questions about.
Sure.
And, um, it says the approval, uh, to amend the city manager's employee, employment agreement. Uh, is it public knowledge on how much our city manager makes?
All the, uh, all the women, Shabazz, you were there when we voted on it and made it public for the record.
Mister Mayor, I asked a question.
I'm not making, you, it was made public when we voted upon it. In order for it to become a, uh, codified agreement, we had to express, express the terms in public meeting.
Mister Mayor, you, you getting in the way where I'm trying to feel right now?
Uh, I mean, again, you're asking it's made public. We had to vote on it to make it public.
That's a yes or no?
We had to vote on it to make it public.
And, and how much is that?
I do not know the terms off the top of my head. Um, let me.
Uh, I read it. It's twenty thousand dollars a month.
Okay, thank you. Um, and it, it's ten, birthday month, um, he can terminate, we can terminate within three days' notice and, and Mister Monahan can terminate with thirty days' notice.
Now, I have, um, uh, some, some questions about that, uh, with our city manager. So, so Mister City Manager, is he, is he allowed to do some talking right now, or, or he has to be quiet at this moment?
He can talk.
Uh, Mister City Manager, uh, like I'm saying, I'm having a little, uh, problems with this, uh, but I actually just wanna make you sweat for a minute. And I really don't, and I really don't have, I really don't have any questions for you. I just want, I just wanted to enjoy that moment just, just right now. I appreciate you here, big time. Alright, thank you, Mayor.
I wasn't sweating, I was packing my bags and hope.
I do have a question.
I was, I was there from, when you, when you walked in the door, and I was, I, I, I'm, I'm here now. I call you, uh, uh, seven days a week, you answer the phone. Appreciate you, sir.
All the women, Blakely.
Uh, yes, uh, Mister Mayor, City Manager, I read the contract today, and, um, I'm wondering if that contract needs to be revised because it has some, um, comments in it that reference Rob Hernandez. So, is this contract gonna be a continuation? Or does he need to have another contract written? How does that work?
I, I think what the contract says, and I tell you the truth, it's probably been, uh, ten months since I've read it, but the, uh, the contract said that when Mister Hernandez departed, then I would become city manager. So I, I think that points moved. Mister Hernandez departed and I became city manager.
Mister Mayor. Okay.
All the women, Brian.
Uh, I, I make a motion that we hurry up and vote before he says it's minute to minute. Thank you very much.
Second.
He ain't going nowhere.
I, 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 I wish that was true. Um, I, I'm reminded every day.
Yeah, we'll go find him and bring him back.
I, I, I will tell you this, that, and that, right now.
He has more work to do.
If, if, if.
Yes, administration.
If he stood up, um, you will see he has on shorts and sneakers right now, so, um.
He ain't going nowhere.
I'm sorry.
All, all, all in favor? Indicate by showing your hands. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mister City Manager. Um, item number twenty-three is the approval of a petition, um, for encroachment of stoops, entrance, canopy, and subterranean foundation at fourteen oh four, uh, Montgomery Street.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, all the women, Brian, I think had her hand up first.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve number twenty-three and twenty-four.
All the women, Shabazz, second. Okay, then probably move to second that we approve the petition for.
Question.
Canopy and subterranean foundation at fourteen oh four. All the women, Blakely.
Uh, number twenty-four, approval of a second amendment to land lease for the arena parking lot? Is that? Huh?
We're on item number twenty-three.
Okay.
You said twenty-three and twenty-four.
Well, my second was twenty-three.
All the woman, Brian, said twenty-three and twenty-four.
Um, you have a question about twenty-four?
Yes, um.
We'll just use twenty-three, um.
Alright.
All in favor, indicate by showing your hands. Motion passes. Item number twenty-four is a, a motion to approve su- second amendment.
Second.
On land lease for area arena parking lot. Uh.
What, what, what arena parking lot is that?
Um, I believe, I, I thought this was pulled.
Mister Mayor, as you recall, based on discussions with you and the council, we decided to continue this item to May the fourteenth because.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, okay, yeah, I didn't remember being on that. Thank you.
So that has been pulled?
It's been pulled.
Been pulled, good.
Alright, and all, and item number twenty, all the women, Shabazz?
Do we need to make a motion for the continuance?
No, we don't. It's just remain on the agenda. It wasn't a hearing, so we should be okay.
Okay.
Uh, all, I, I, number twenty-five is approval of the final platform major subdivision, Spring Lakes Phase Six. I noted, uh, all the.
Mister Mayor.
There, and I had similar concerns. I understand you've, you've, you've had some discussion, all the women, Lanier?
Yes, sir. Again, we've had an opportunity to speak to residents of the Highlands area, several, and to the developer. Uh, we, the residents did get an opportunity to express to him. They understood that this was the final plot, and they did not want to inhibit the project, but however, there are some more projects that they have on, uh, online, coming down the line, and the residents expressed, and the developer agreed that they will have an opportunity to have more dialogue on the projects coming up. So on this particular item, I move that we approve the final platform major subdivision, Spring Lakes Phase Six.
Second.
Second the motion.
And probably move to second that we approve the final plat- for, um, Spring Lakes Phase Six. You heard the motion. All in favor, indicate by showing your hands. Opposed? Motion, uh, all the men.
That was appro- best approval.
Approved, thank you. Motion passes. Um, ladies and gentlemen, that ends our prepared agenda. I just wanted just for purpose of updating you, um, a lot has occurred over the last, um, a couple of days. Obviously, um, we are under a, uh, stay-at-home order until April the thirtieth. However, starting on tomorrow, um, some businesses will allow, be allowed to be open between the twenty-fourth and the twenty-seventh. Um, I'll tell you that on my media availability on last Tuesday. Obviously, there is not much we can do about the governor's order, particularly since he, um, specifically mentioned that local municipalities could not, uh, issue any types of resolutions, um, that would be more restrictive than his order. Um, so obviously, he was very clear about where he stood. Um, what I've asked citizens to do, and what I've asked, what I ask you to continue to employ citizens, um, is that, um, we are still going up in cases. Um, we've gone up, I, I believe, um, over ten percent in the last just couple of days. Um, we have not plateaued. Um, and I've spent the last couple of days on a variety of, of national, um, uh, news shows because people have been very interested about what's happening here in Georgia, what's happening in Savannah. Um, and so the goal here is for, for us to make sure that people know that, you know, we're not police, we're gonna follow the law, but we're asking our citizens, and I, I'm certainly, um, asking you as thought leaders and leaders of our communities, um, to tell people to do what they need to do to stay safe. We are not anti-business. We want our businesses to do well, but we don't want our businesses to become set goals of, of COVID nineteen. Um, and that is just, this is real as it can be. Um, I can't understand how we can open up barber shops, but we can't open up the Department of Labor so folks can get their unemployment insurance. Um, how we can open up beauty salons and tattoo parlors, um, and expect people to observe social distancing when all of you know, um, there is no way that you can render those types of personal services, um, and do it from six feet away. There's no way for, for us to ensure, you know how we are. You know how our community is. We are a very social community. And, uh, the governor's saying to, to practice social distancing. What we have found is there has been no way to enforce social distancing. Um, and so, um, we're just a few coughs, a few sneezes, and a few fevers away from having a outbreak, um, similar to Albany, as you all are familiar. That occurred from just two funeral services. So what I'm asking council to do is for us to continue maintaining where we are, continue protecting our employees. We've already, uh, approved, um, same match approved, um, hazard paid through the thirtieth of May, um, and let's continue to maintain our restrictions, and then we look next month and see where we're at, and then go from there.
Mister Mayor Johnson.
I know there are a lot of comments, so I will go with all the women, Blakely, and then I saw all the women, Shabazz, and all the women, Lanier, and all the women, Carter, and all the women, Brian.
Everybody.
No, then all the women, Palumbo.
Uh, Mayor Johnson, um, I saw something that came on one of the emails. Were we also supposed to, uh, extend, uh, the city attorney's contract, and that just wasn't on the agenda?
No, the city attorney works as a pleasure of the, um, of the city council, so he, he's at, he's at will con- at will.
Okay. I just saw that, and I was just curious. I just wanna say that, um, you know, even though the governor has said what he has said, uh, it would behoove all of the citizens in, in, in the country to pay attention to what is going on. COVID nineteen is real. I have had friends that have lost loved ones. I was looking at CNN today, and, um, they're now saying that, uh, COVID nineteen affects certain individuals certain ways. Now they're saying that younger individuals are now, um, becoming stroke victims. So I, I just wanna say be careful, be careful. Just because the governor said it does not mean that you have to do it, okay? It's better to be safe than to be sorry. Please, keep your gloves on, keep your mask on, social distance yourselves. Um, it, look, my nails are jacked up right now because I refuse to go to a nail salon. So y'all, please.
Show us.
Huh? I ain't, I ain't, and I ain't gonna do it for the vine. But y'all, listen, listen, please, I mean, especially, um, poor and impoverished communities, African Americans. Y'all, listen, please, this, this thing is real. It is very real. And a young lady I saw, she tested positive, she quarantined herself, she went back to the doctor, did the test over, she still had the virus. So, you know, we don't know how this thing is gonna go, but please, please, protect yourselves, protect your families, um, 'cause we want you here. Thank you.
All the women, Shabazz, I believe was next.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I just want to reiterate what I have, uh, stated on my Facebook page, and that is, uh, that I, um, along with yourself, uh, Mister Mayor, and I say like this, that I'm urging everyone, uh, to stay at home, even though, uh, uh, Governor Kemp, uh, stated what he, he said, and, um, in reopening, uh, some of the businesses, uh, in, in the state of Georgia. And the data is clear, data is clear, numbers are clear, and, um, our state is not ready, uh, to be open because numbers potentially are increasing. So I too say that, uh, use common sense when it comes to yourself, your family, your loved ones, and your community. Stay home. Keep yourselves safe. Don't continue to go to the, the grocery stores and these other places because this COVID nineteen, it is real. Stay home, take care of yourself. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, all the women, Shabazz, and, and, and just as a point, um, only in this world, when I don't go get my hair cut, my hair actually grows. So that's an interesting thing. Uh, all the women, Lanier, I believe was next.
Yes, Mister Mayor, I just want to let you know that I thank you for your handling of this pandemic and how you are representing our city in the light of the state and the federal leadership, and I want to send a message out to all those who are listening that this council stand in support of your handling of this COVID situation. So thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you. We do it together. Thank you very much. Uh, all the women, Brian, I believe was next.
Mister Mayor, I'm just so proud of you. I have so many friends because of the different organizations that I am in, and they just wanna commend you by outstanding job that you've done, the voice that you've been in, in the, in the midst of all of this uncharted water. You've been a stand-up guy, and I say that privately and publicly, and I'm so proud to serve with you, and, um, just keep doing what you're doing. We're gonna keep, uh, using, uh, common sense and logic. We all need to stay home. Uh, this epidemic is real. I've lost members of my family, my intimate family, and it's very hard, and people are dying in these, um, hospitals, and they've opened everything else, but they have not opened these hospitals where people are dying by themselves. It is just a horrible place to be in history, but I think we're gonna be a better nation because of it, because people know that, uh, what we must do, and what we must do is follow, uh, follow the rules of our conscience so that we may remain safe. It's okay to stay home. Love on your family, clean some, clean out your closet, you know, uh, do something in your yard, but just stay home, and thank you so much. Thank you so much, sir, and you look really good in that white and black.
Oh, well, thank you very much, and actually for us, um, I've been contacted in the last, um, two or three days. I've been on CNN several times, I've been on MSNBC, I've been on Fox. Um, I got contacted by the, uh, the Daily Beast, um, I, I'm in an article from yesterday. BBC is coming tomorrow, um, and again, for me, it's an opportunity, um, to lift up Savannah. And I appreciate you. Every single time I get on there, I'm talking about, um, the beauty and, and how great that is, and that we, we want people to come back.
Yes.
Come back, only when it's safe to come back, um, and that nobody's gonna come here unless the folks that live here every single day feel safe, so. I, I thank you all so much for, for that. All the women, Carter.
Thank you.
Yes, I am reminded of the implications that, uh, decisions like what we are subjected to right now have on our families. As previously acknowledged, episodes of family violence and sexual violence have increased, and so I want to continuously remind our citizens of the importance of reporting. Uh, there will be an extra added stress level for our families in the face of not only sheltering in place, but now you have individuals who will be subjected to, um, not being able to qualify for unemployment as they are called back into work. And what that translates to is more stressors on those family units. And so we want to continuously encourage our citizens to reach out to our nonprofit entities, uh, through our unit way. They can call two one one through our rate crisis center, our safe shelters, and other centers that are in place to serve our individuals who become victims of family violence. Um, I trust that those entities are capable and poised to meet the demands that, uh, our citizens have by way of these crimes. Uh, I realize that they too are challenged as a result of our sheltering in place and the safe distancing, so all of these provide for unique circumstances. Nonetheless, um, we want to acknowledge the importance of these individuals reporting in that this, these type crimes tear at the fabric of our society, and it preclude individuals from becoming effectively plugged in as, uh, successful citizens in our community. Um, I also want to take this time to remind Savanians of the importance of being counted. Um, somehow, some way, in the midst of the pandemic, in all that we are doing, um, we recognize that life is going on, and the life of our government is also going on. And so that count will go on with or without Savannah. So we want all of the citizens of Savannah to make sure you feel out your senses. Um, our numbers are pretty low in comparison to where we could be. Um, I would like the city manager to expound on the grant opportunity that we had. I'm not certain of the, the status of that grant, but while at GMA, many of us learned of a grant opportunity through the census, which would essentially allow us, uh, funds so that we could market, um, census opportunities. So is Mister Monahan still around?
So yes, ma'am, uh, thanks to you. You gave us the lead, and staff applied for it back the very same day that you.
back the very same day that you informed staff about the availability, the funding, but we're, uh, we're just waiting, we've not heard yet from, uh, we've not heard yet on whether the city has received funding or not.
Okay, and I just wanna say thanks, because that was a pretty quick turnaround, and I believe your staff possibly worked on that over the weekend, in that we just became knowledgeable of it, um, over that, that weekend while we were in Washington, so, I'm hopeful that that will help us increase our count, but in the interim, if each council member could utilize their social media platforms and other, uh, platforms to encourage our citizens to get counted.
Thank you, Alderman Carter, um, just helped some add some statistics, right now, um, Chatham, Savannah, the city of Savannah is about forty-two point nine percent, um, of response rate, um, Chatham County is at forty-five point two, so again, we're still low, well below half, uh, of what we need, so, um, please, as a big push for us, so many things that we count on right now, as a matter of fact, um, when they're looking at numbers in terms of federal funding, um, our number is based on what we do right now, so, um, yeah, I, I join Alderman Carter and ask all of you, please, let's make that push to make sure we can get over fifty percent, um, so please, thank you all so much, um, Alderman Palumbo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna echo council's comments and commend you for your leadership, not just to our city, but representing our state, uh, to the rest of the world in such a positive way, and being that voice of reason through this crisis, uh, I just wanna put on the public record and have all of our residents know that your city has considered every possibility, uh, when it comes to our governor's orders, we acknowledge the risks and, and the challenges that come with that, and we've explored every possible avenue, um, and that right now, we think the best thing, uh, for us to do is for everyone to act, to practice that personal safety, uh, well, many of the, the council, we've all had discussion with our constituents about what it takes to reopen the economy, and I think it's important to say that even with the restrictions lifted, we've seen countless businesses that are still elected to remain closed, uh, because they know that it's not up to government to restart the economy, it's gonna take all of us defeating this virus until we can restart the economy, so, uh, hang in there, everyone, uh, please be safe, uh, and be smart, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Leggett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's good to see everybody, and, uh, it's almost bittersweet when we have to get on, uh, Zoom, uh, it's, it's sad to have to give reports that are heart-wrenching, because, uh, just like the, uh, mayor who has family in New York, I have a grandmother and, and who, uh, died on yesterday in New York, and it's sad that the funeral homes that are in New York are so overrun with, uh, corpses that they, they don't have room, and, um, and, uh, can't send, uh, family members down here, you have only one option, you might have to do cremations, and, and then that, we, oh, I don't care how they try to change the narrative, we are not plateauing, we are continuing to climb and climb and climb, and they're trying to hide the numbers, Savannah has more than we have in numbers in the coronavirus, they just, uh, and it's sad to know that they're just so gung-ho and trying to open up and, uh, think that it's really not happening, and then, and the good part about it is, you know, and I, I'm hopeful and I'm glad that this week I was made a grandfather, and, um, I hate to have a grandchild brought into this world knowing that I can't really protect him because the rest of the community don't think that the small ones and the babies and the old ones are, uh, not, that we don't adhere to just using common sense, so, just really, man, just know, even in the funeral home, there's more people working funeral home business, tell them to take that extra light, when you wipe down, uh, when you wipe down bodies and, and you get people prepared, because even the people who work in the funeral service are being affected, and, uh, and everybody who's affected over virus, and everybody on this page, and everybody that's listening, you know, I'm praying for you, um, and even touch all the way close to my own home, so, I'm past, and I just.
Thank you, Alderman Palumbo, I mean, Alderman Purdy, you have anything, sir?
Yes, I do, uh, Mayor, thank you very much, and, um, you know, I, I just wanna say that I am truly blessed to have not one, but, but two, uh, essential jobs in the community, and I know there's a lot of people out there that aren't working that wish they were, um, there's a lot of people out there that, 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 that need work, there's a lot of people out there that are, that are working that, that don't have a choice but to work, um, and I think all too often, we don't recognize these folks, and that's, that's our fast-food workers at restaurants, our, our hospital staff and folks, our, our public safety folks, that's fire, police, EMS, um, some of our, our healthcare and hospitality folks, and, you know, ladies and gentlemen, these, these folks don't have a choice, they, they have to go out there and work, and the things that other people take for granted, staying at home, uh, these, these folks don't get that opportunity, so, uh, it, it's, it's easy for a vast majority to, to put a lot of opinions on social media and say what should or shouldn't be done, but, uh, from, from personally, from my standpoint, um, you know, I, I agree with Alderman Palumbo, the city has done, and it is doing everything we can at this point, that's within our power, uh, to be able to make things work, uh, to be able to help people get, you know, get to where they need to be and help keep our public safe, and that's the biggest thing right now, um, is keeping the, the public as safe as possible, uh, I've had plenty of calls from, from folks in the sixth district, business owners, and they're, they're asking my recommendation whether or not they should open their businesses, and I said, you know, the governor has made his call, and we can't, we can't do anything different than what he says, but that's a personal choice, if businesses decide to remain closed, that's a personal choice that they certainly can't exercise, so, uh, with that being said, I just wanna thank each and everybody on council, uh, through this trying and hard time, I know that when I was elected, and probably everyone on the council, when you were elected, you did not imagine that we would run into a situation like this, uh, it's just very unimaginable, and, um, the only thing I told people, and I'll tell everybody here, uh, when we, through this, we'll be stronger as a community, we'll be stronger as a council, and I think once we overcome this, we can overcome anything.
Thank you, um, we really appreciate everybody, I think, again, Alderman Shabazz, unmute yourself, ma'am.
Just wanted to make the announcement about the yard waste that is going to take place, um, on next week, so that we can continuously keep this on the minds of our citizens, I know there's been a lot of concerns, but our city manager has, uh, managed to, uh, get this done for all of our citizens, so this is citywide, so started on Tuesday, April the twenty-seventh through Friday, the, uh, there is going to be yard waste, uh, services for our citizens and dry, dry trash, just wanted to make that announcement, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, um, and again, just wanna add to that, Alderman Blakely?
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna let the citizens know that, uh, the stimulus checks came out, but, um, folk need to be wise and not foolish with that plot of money, because your bills are gonna be coming up, so, don't go running out in the community, spending it, every chance you get, you've got to save it, that's it.
Um, um, I wanted just to let you all know, Alderman Carter, you raised your hand?
I actually wasn't, but I was, but go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to, um, ask the city manager two things, one regarding waste, um, dry trash pickup, and the other regarding the census, um, I think I saw somewhere where we are paying one hundred thousand dollars for this company to do a one-time pickup, and by way of giving consideration to another option, um, is it feasible for us to offer as an opportunity for our sanitation staffers to say work on a Saturday or Sunday, um, for, uh, extra pay, um, to include that in the rotation of a schedule, so that we can utilize those resources to pay our own people, uh, particularly since we already have the equipment, um, if we can give consideration to that, and secondly, um, I would like to request that we have, um, a workshop on the census, if possible, um, for our next meeting.
Yes, I, I, I'll take a look at the, uh, we'll, we'll have to, uh, project what that expense would be to ask sanitation to work an extra day, because of course, that's getting to overtime, and remember, not only, uh, are we paying their hourly rate, but we're adding another two dollars and fifty cents, so, putting them on Saturday, even though that may be, we'll look at those numbers, we'll just have to project that out as a possibility for future.
Yeah, I just threw it out as an option, I'm not sure if the numbers make sense, you, you would be best to determine that, thank you.
Yes, we'll do those, we'll make those projections.
Um, just finally, um, two quick things, one, um, our numbers are, we at one hundred and ninety-nine cases in, um, in Chatham, um, so, we are, we're almost at two hundred cases, um, and six deaths, um, and again, we expect that number to go up, um, and so, we just, you know, thank you for being mindful of that, we've asked also the city manager to maintain, um, our, um, regulations on cemeteries, um, and ensuring that our cemeteries, again, observe social distancing, that part we control, um, and just for those who inquire about my family, I'm, actually, today, my mother and father went today to have their, have another test, because New York is where we need to be ultimately, where they're testing, just testing all citizens to really figure out whether they're, whether they have it or not, so, I mean, we think they're okay, but again, they're literally going door-to-door saying, you know, please, go ahead and get tested, and until we can get widespread testing like that, you really don't know how, how far you actually are, uh, in terms of the virus, the other thing to, uh, and Alderman Leggett, you have our condolences in the past to your loved one, um, you know, we've had, not only death in my family, um, but family friends that we've known, some of them have been dead over a month, and still have not been buried, um, because the funeral homes, as Alderman Leggett said, cannot take them, so essentially, they are, they remain in the back of a refrigerated truck at the hospitals, um, and literally, the trucks are so full that people have to, the funeral directors have to go and literally step over bodies to try to locate those bodies to be able to go and bury them, again, they can't bury them quick enough, so, they're really opting for cremation, and if you don't claim the body, understand within a certain period of time, then you go into what they call potter's field or a place where, um, is unmarked graves, and so, people, because you're not with the person when they die, you don't know, sometimes it's a while before you can even find out what happened, so again, you know, we just don't wanna become that place, um, you know, and that's why it's so important for us to maintain and manage, so, we're telling everybody, if you agree that we should all tell our folks to keep their behinds at home, please raise up your hands, keep your, keep yourself at home, this is your council, Nick, I need, I need your finger, there you go, there you go, yeah, tell them, stay, stay home, please, stay home, um, final thing, I noticed, um, um, Mr. Massey is, is making a point of some point, and I wanted to know what your background's about, sir.
I'm sorry, I got to say it earlier, the Georgia City Cities Week was supposed to be celebrated this week, but that has been postponed to October, the week of October fourth, so, um, I just borrowed the image for this meeting, since we're in the midst of what it was supposed to be, pre-corona.
But it is still, it's still the best Cities Week, uh, the best city in Georgia, of course, is what, Savannah, so we're very clear about that, um, also, as y'all are familiar, um, the Georgia Municipal Association Conference in June, uh, has also been canceled, um, you know, again, major loss of revenue to our community, we love, um, having the experience of all of the elected officials from over five hundred twenty-five cities in Georgia coming to our city, but, um, we'll rebound, we, we, we will rebound, um, again, Corona will not kill us, Corona will make us better, we will not define us, so, God bless you, anything else, we are the good of the order.
Mayor Johnson, um, I think you probably should keep your calendar clear for December, in that we will be expecting lots of baby shower invitations, and I received one message from a citizen today, I don't know where she was going with this, and I don't know, um, if you are taking this serious, but she said you can also look for a child support order, so, I don't know what that meant.
Believe it or not, I, I've heard that, and I mean, you all, I mean, I don't know where it's gonna go, but, um.
COVID, baby.
I'm a name of Corona, too. Me either, John, God bless, thank you.